The Salem City Council will hold its regular meeting on November 17th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, 93 Washington Street, second floor, for the purpose of discussing any and all business. Members of the public may attend in person or remotely via Zoom by going to the website link noted in the agenda, password 513504. Go to the website link zoom.us/join, enter webinar ID 817-0865-0396, followed by the meeting password noted above if necessary. Or by telephone, participants can dial a toll-free number at 877-853-5257 or 888-475-4499. When prompted, enter meeting webinar ID 817-0865-0396 and follow the instructions to join the meeting. For those dialing in, you may press *9 to raise your hand to speak if signed up for public testimony or to participate in the public hearing portion of the agenda if applicable. The public may also watch the meeting live on SATV on Channel 22. A regular meeting of the city council was held in person and remotely via Zoom on Thursday, November 17th, 2022, at 7:00 PM for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice of this meeting was posted on November 15th, 2022, at 12:28 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV. Counselors absent, none. Council President Marcello is presiding. Council Prozinski moved to dispense of the reading of the record of the previous meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries. I now request that everyone please stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilor Merkel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now at the public testimony section of the meeting, and we have three people signed up for public comment tonight. The first one is Steve Kapantus. And I will ask everyone who's making public comment, please speak right into the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Steve Kapantus, 23A West area Street, Salem. I want to talk tonight about Lee Fort Terrace and the TIF. I had the opportunity to review all of the data that's in the backup files. You know, I was kind of blown away because the message that has been sent from this city to the residents of Lee Fort Terrace, of the 47 residents that live there currently, that you'd have a place to come back to. That's not what's shown in the data. Of the 47 residents that live at Lee Fort Terrace, 46 are below 30% AMI. And the 47th family might be below it, but because that last category is a very broad definition, it lists from 45,000 to 999,000. So effectively, all the families that live there are below 30% AMI. When you look at what's going to be given for affordability, Beacon is reporting only 17 of those 50 senior units are going to be at 30%. So that means when we move these 47 families out, if that's not changed, only 17 are coming back because 30 won't be able to afford 60% AMI rent-based. We are constructively evicting them while telling them you have a place to come back. And now we have a TIF. We're going to reward the developer for evicting our most precious tenants in this city. So I'm hoping this goes to committee, and I hope that you correct that. We need to have 50 units at 30% for seniors. That's what was told to us, and it needs to be corrected. Thank you. Oh, one last thing. If it's not corrected, I hope it's the counselors that have to deliver the message to the tenants that they can't come back.
Thank you for being with us tonight to give public comment. Next up, we have Stacia Craft.
Hi, Stacia Craft. So I would just want to-
Can you give your address for the record, please?
140 Federal Street, Salem. So I just want to say that Steve and I went over that today and picked that up while we were just reading the data. So hopefully, you've already done that. I'm assuming you've already done that. Also, I think in 2020, I know several of you counselors said that you supported the idea of protecting our wetlands and floodplains. So I think above this idea of even the TIF, if you compare the maps of the Salem Sound Coast Watch and the Woods Hole group, if you look at that and superimpose it over this area that you're suggesting a TIF, you're actually suggesting that we develop in the areas that Woods Hole has said are the most serious and dangerous areas to develop. I'm sure you already know that, too. But I did feel like I needed to say it. And if your intention really is to protect the wetlands and floodplains, then I don't think you would support this. And, you know, he's already made the point about the 17 units, which is, you know, Beacon came forward with a market rate proposal first, and then it was citizens that-
Go ahead.
It was citizens that brought up the fact that it was marker eight units, it was 174, and then that came back and it was changed. And now again, it's citizens that are like, hey, wait, this is 17 units. And, you know, we have been restricted from these meetings, so we've been asked by people like Joe Doyle to come and support them, and the police have been called to limit our engagement. They also don't have, before this all started, their community room was closed to them, so they don't have the ability to communicate with each other. So that's a serious issue that I'm sure you're all looking into. And the other part about this parks development, I can't imagine that you would want your children to have less green space while the children in Hamilton and Dover and other communities romp freely with acres and acres of green space. So we have very little green space. We have a poorer population. I don't know if the median income is 60, and then, you know, we're talking 60 and 40. These children should have lots and lots of green space, and not just green space that isn't engaged, but green space with a plan where they can all play and go. So the idea of selling off any of our parkland, I guess in the one case, I could see it as if it was subsidized housing. But right now, we're giving our subsidized housing over to a private development corporation, so I can't imagine that that's what you have in mind. So again, I'm probably telling you all things that you already know and things that you're already considering. And if you're serious about affordable housing, subsidized housing, and green space, you will not approve any of these things tonight.
Thank you. Can I just check, is there a question about whether we're going out over Zoom? Okay, okay, okay. That's fine. The third speaker tonight is Joseph Doyle. If you could approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Joseph Doyle, Lee Fort Terrace.
Can you speak right into the mic? Yep, yep. Jeff will also help you.
Joseph Doyle, Lee Fort Terrace. Quite frankly, I don't even want to be here. I just don't see the due diligence based upon the information that I have and what Stacy said earlier. Taking away the common area has made it have an inability for all the residents there to communicate with each other and come to a consensus as exactly, you know, what would be the proper thing to do. There seems to be a lack of due diligence. We've been getting a ton of misrepresentation and a ton of omissions. Let's get realistic here. What you're actually saying is unethical and immoral, and I can't believe you guys are even considering it. It's even up in the air. You want to take 50, 47 elderly, disabled, ill people and leave them on a suspect situation on whether they're going to have a domicile. I have to say this only because it's where I'm at, and I'm at crisis. One of my surgeons told me, he says, "The problem with you, Joe, is you look fine." I have to put off major surgery in order to even be here. I don't know what's going to happen. So I can't be in a position where I'm in the hospital for six, eight weeks and then coming home, hopefully, and there's no place to come home to. So we've been promised a defender, we've been promised an attorney, that hasn't been realized. And if anyone has taken a look at that architectural design, it's just like holyoke. We didn't have any COVID issues because of the fresh air that was flowing. Now everything is going to be indoors. How many fatalities do you think you're going to have? How many fatalities do you think you're going to have with the anxiety and fear that's being fostered on that mini-community, the satellite community, all the old people? I hear it. That's one of the reasons I'm here. That's one of the reasons I had to write that paper. You feel a lot of fear there, a lot of anxiety there, and it doesn't seem to rub you guys, doesn't seem to go through the feathers at all. Think about all the surrounding communities. This is a small cottage area that's world famous. Then this whole patina and attractiveness is going to disappear, and we're going to add 200, 300, 400 cars a day, plus the pollution. Oh, yeah, we'll all have a good time with that. So all I can say is that there's a lot wrong here, and a lot of questions that have to be answered, and they're not being answered. And I can't believe you guys are even considering doing this in the first place. If you want to do something from patines on down, you could build 1,000 units. You don't have to go to one of the last green spaces with a bunch of people who are, it was actually designed by the World War II crowd for people that were in the position that I and the rest of them are, as the last stop before the graveyard. I guess the way this thing is setting up, that has no consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. That concludes-
I don't even want to be here. I'm forced to.
Thank you. That concludes the public testimony portion of the agenda. Hearings.
We continue from the last meeting, a hearing on the laying out and street acceptance for a man doorway and a portion of Osborne Hill Drive as public ways or streets in the city of Salem.
Do we have anyone appearing in favor?
I have my friend.
Brian McGrill. Okay, I think you can speak now.
May I be heard?
Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you, President Marcello and honorable members of the Salem City Council. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrill here again on behalf of Osborne Hills Realty Trust and Paul DiBiase, who is the trustee. Paul is also with me tonight. This is, I think you're aware, is a petition for the acceptance and laying out of a portion of Osborne Hills Drive and a man doorway in the Strongwater Crossing subdivision. This was, this hearing was continued tonight to provide time for Mr. Milton, the Director of Public Services, to review the request and to look in detail at videos of the roadway infrastructure that had been provided to him. It's my understanding that that review has occurred and that Mr. Milton has made it known that the result of the review was favorable, and he has no issues at this point with those streets being accepted and laid out. So with that said, we will respectfully request that the council vote to allow that to occur.
Thank you. Is there anyone else appearing in favor? Is there anyone appearing in opposition? Seeing none, are there any questions from the council? Council McLean.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. This is not a question, but just a confirmation that I did in fact communicate with City Engineering, and they did confirm that they had completed their review of the utilities under the named streets and that they were favorable, so I see no reason it can't proceed.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Council McLean moves to close the public hearing. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Council McLean.
I further move that this be adopted by roll call vote.
Council McLean moves for adoption by roll call vote. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel McCaffrey?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Prozinski?
Yes.
Counsel Ricardi?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson Belt?
Yes.
And Counsel Marcello?
On the question of laying out and street acceptance for a man doorway and a portion of Osborne Hill Drive, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative and none in the negative. The matter carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being with us, Mr. McGrill.
Thank you.
Appointments and reappointments.
With the mayor's appointment of the following to the Salem Food Policy Council with terms to expire, which have been corrected with a new letter from the mayor's office.
Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Council President. I move these be held under the rules.
Counsel Hapworth moves that these be held under the rules. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
With the mayor's appointment of Jack Lisa and 26 Phelps Street to the Sustainability, Energy, and Resiliency Committee with the terms expire on July 20th, 2023.
Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Council President. I move this be held under the rules.
Counsel Hapworth moves that these be held under the rules. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
With the mayor's appointment of Jason Lang of 43 Osgood Street to the Beautification Committee with the terms expire November 17th, 2025.
Counsel Watson Belt.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move that this be held under the rules.
Counsel Watson Belt moves that these be held under the rules. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
We have the mayor's appointment of Heather Lang of 43 Osgood Street to the Scholarship and Education Committee with the terms expire on September 10th, 2023.
Counsel Watson Belt.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move that this be held under the rules.
Counsel Watson Belt moves that these be held under the rules. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
With the mayor's appointment of Kelly Tyler Lewis, 23 Warren Street to the Historic Commission with the terms expire November 17th, 2024.
Counsel Watson Belt.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move this to be held under the rules.
Counsel Watson Belt moves that these be held under the rules. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
We have the mayor's appointment of Demi Fox, 7 Meadow Street, to the Salem Recycling Committee for informational purposes only.
Counsel Cohen.
I move that this is received and filed.
Counsel Cohen moves that this be received and filed. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
We have an appointment received at the deadline of Tuesday noon.
Counsel Prozinski.
Thank you.
Move suspension of the rules.
Move suspension of the rules to allow the matter to come before the council, do a late file under Rule Section 28A. The mayor's appointment of Captain Fred Ryan to the Salem Harbor Port Authority with a term to expire November 17th, 2025.
Counsel Prozinski moves for suspension of the rules. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Counsel Prozinski.
Because we can't, as much as I'd like to say good things about Captain Ryan right now, because it's being held under the rules, we'll wait till the appropriate time during our next meeting. Thank you.
Counsel Prozinski moves that these be held under the rules. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
We have a further appointment received at the deadline of Tuesday noon.
Counsel Varela.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move that-
Suspension of the rules. Counsel Varela moves for suspension of the rules. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Counsel Varela.
We have the mayor's appointment of Michaela Short of 81 Bancroft Road. Once he suspends, it's really, once he suspends the rules, I read it. That's okay. I just, it just didn't go that way the other time. Sorry. To Salem Food Policy Council with the terms expire November 17th, 2025.
Counsel Varela.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move that this be held under the rules.
Counsel Varela moves that these be held under the rules. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries.
I go with the flow.
Okay. Communications from the mayor.
We've been ordered that the sum of $24,756.12 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buy Back Account for two school, public school employees.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move for suspension of the rules.
Seeing no objection, Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you. I further move for adoption.
Counsel McCarthy moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you. I would like to thank these two employees of the city on their retirement and wish them well and thank them for the service. This is contractual, and these numbers have been vetted through the various departments, and these numbers are correct, so I would move for adoption.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, on Counsel McCarthy's motion for adoption, all those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. And thank you to those two employees for their work. Further communications from the mayor.
We've been ordered that the sum of $9,897 is hereby appropriated from the generous stabilization fund to the Police Department Building Maintenance Account for the costs associated with repairs to the gun range due to water damage.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move for suspension of the rules.
Seeing no objection, Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I further move for adoption.
Counsel McCarthy moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you. We're very advantageous, and our police department actually has its own gun range in the building. It's of importance to them to be able to keep up with their training, and unfortunately, there were some, there was some water damage in it, which caused damage, and that needs to be corrected. And so they've gone through the proper channels to identify the cost, and I would move for adoption.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, on Counsel McCarthy's motion for adoption, all those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have been ordered that the sum of $9,585 is hereby appropriated from the following Receipts Reserve Appropriation Account to be transferred to the Park and Rec Golf Course Equipment Account for costs associated with the purchase of non-permeable green covers to protect the greens from winter ice damage.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move for suspension of the rules.
Seeing no objection, Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you. I further move for adoption.
Counsel McCarthy moves for adoption, under discussion.
The golf course is set up in such a way that they identify their budget, but also they have receipts reserved that accumulate in their account, and at the end of the year, whatever's left, we sweep them out in order to offset the, in some cases, the tax rate, which we'll be doing next month. But before that, they've identified a need, and anybody who has had the ability or the pleasure of playing at the golf course realizes what a great job that the crew up there has been doing to upgrade and maintain that facility, to make it to the point where more and more people, it's becoming more and more popular because of its, how good it is to be able to play there. And one of the things they've identified is the need for these covers, so I would move for adoption.
Any further discussion? Counsel Varela.
Thank you, President Marcello. I just wanted to make this clear. I understand the allocation of the $9,585 for this. I really think that there's a different way to do this. Being, you know, experiencing this with a delay in the morning, if there is a frost warning, this could alleviate the damage to the greens. So I think with a little bit of patience, we could save a little bit of money. That's it.
Any further discussion? We have a motion for adoption on the table. Right, right? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have been ordered to accept the donation of $3,000 from Alexandra Camarillo. The donation is to be deposited into the Parks and Recreation Donation Fund for a Classic Series bench at Salem Common or within the historic district.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move for adoption.
Counsel McCarthy moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Alexandra for a generous donation, and these benches are very popular, they're remembrance benches, so I'm sure they're dedicating to somebody in their family or somebody that they know, but it will be a great amenity added to either the Common or someplace in the historic district. And I would like, once again, to thank them there for the donation and move for adoption.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, on Counsel McCarthy's motion for adoption, all those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We've been ordered to accept the donation from Friends of the Salem Council on Aging in the amount of $2,700 for Thanksgiving meals for isolated homebound seniors.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move for adoption.
Counsel McCarthy moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you. I cannot say enough about the Friends of the Salem Council on Aging and their generosity to our seniors and our shut-ins and homebound seniors. This is money that the Friends of the Council on Aging raised through various events they run during the year. They also, during the month of October, they rent out or lease spaces, or lease, I should say, have people come in and pay for parking in the Council on Aging on the weekend, and John Russell and his crew does a fabulous job, and all the monies that they receive, they put into an account, and this is one of the things that they do with those monies. And it clearly states on the signboard as you pull in to the Council on Aging that the funds that are generated go to the Friends of the Council on Aging and the Friends of the Park and Rec Department to, for programs like this. A special, a big shout-out to Rosanna Donahue and all her workers down there. They take these funds and they purchase the meals, and they, from what I've heard, the amount of meals they're going to give out this year is more than they ever have. And I just want to thank everyone involved. We're trying, I'm trying to convince my boys whether or not they want to go to the football game this year, because we haven't gone in a few years, or whether or not we're going to be delivering meals again. So we're going to let Rosanna know pretty soon. She has a ton of volunteers lined up this year, always looking for more if anyone's willing. But just reach out to Rosanna and the people down at the Council on Aging. But once again, thank you to all that they do during this Thanksgiving season. Just to be, my boys and I have done it the last couple of years, and just to be able to call somebody on the phone and say, "My son will be coming up to the front door with you," Thanksgiving meal is just a special moment for someone that you know, that, you know, whose family may not be with them anymore, or their family lives other parts of the country, and they can't be there, just to do something and be able to do that. Even that brief exchange, it only takes seconds, but it just means the world to them. So I want to thank everyone that's involved in this, and I move for adoption.
Any further discussion? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Marcello. I also want to express my gratitude to the Friends of the Salem Council on Aging. I have the pleasure of volunteering for their Thanksgiving meals and delivery, and it's very impactful, and it's really a meaningful work that they do in serving our seniors, and I really appreciate their efforts. And this is just a great, great event that they host in delivering the meals, and thank you.
Counsel Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd be brief. I just want to add a couple of things. I agree, completely agree with both of my colleagues who expressed the gratitude to the Council on Aging and also volunteer. This is going to be maybe my fourth year, and the smile that we see in the face of the people receiving those meals speaks very loud and clear that the work that they do in the Friends of the Council on Aging and the whole crew and, you know, City of Salem, providing those needs is valuable. I'd like to say thank you to every one of them, in particular to Andy LaPointe, who is the president, and this great donation that they do every year, and this great work that they do. It means a lot for so many people, and I want to thank them personally in my own way because I happen to have some relatives who receive some of the meals, and they feel so happy when they receive that meal, so thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no further discussion, on Counsel McCarthy's motion for adoption, all those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We've been ordered to accept the donation of $1,200 from Richard Nardella. The donation is to be deposited in the Park and Rec Donation Fund for a wooden and historic bench.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move for adoption.
Counsel McCarthy moves for adoption, under discussion.
Once again, I'd like to thank Mr. Richard Nardella for his generous donation for this remembrance bench, and I'm sure where it's placed, it's going to be a great addition. And- And they're such a, it's such a great way to accessorize our parks and areas with additional benches and seating for people to be able to gather. So I want to once again thank him for his generous donation, and I move for adoption.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel McCarthy's motion for adoption, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an ordinance to amend the ordinance relative to pickup of large items.
Counsel Ricardi.
Thank you, Counsel President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counsel Ricardi moves that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the City Council hereby authorizes free parking in municipal garage lots, municipal garages, lots, and meters on November 25th, 26th, and 27th, 2022, and support a Small Business Saturday, and December 23rd, 24th, 25th, and 26th, 2022.
Counsel Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move that this be adopted.
Counsel Watsonfeld moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you, President Marcello. As many in the room and at home probably know, Small Business Saturday, and of course, the holiday season, is a ripe and important time for our small businesses in the downtown area specifically. And so, you know, this order makes it easier and more enticing for those who do not, you know, who aren't within walking distance to these shops to come and support our small businesses here in Salem, which I hope everyone will do as they are enjoying their holiday festivities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Watsonfeld's motion for adoption, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order for our annual P's for fees.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move for adoption.
Counsel McCarthy moves for adoption, under discussion.
The good city clerks stole my line. It's our annual P's for fees program, where we allow anybody who has, may have forgotten about a parking ticket or hasn't paid a parking ticket or some sort of violation, the ability to be able to, instead of pay that violation, is to pay it with any kind of canned goods that we can then turn around and donate. But as states in what's in the order, we're not allowed to forego any additional add-ons that are put on by the state. So if the registry is, you know, if you've waited so long to pay your fine, and now the registries impose some fees on top of our local fees, we can't waive those. But what we can do is waive what we have control over, so if you do come in, we ask you to be generous. And thank you so much, because what we're doing is, you know, allowing people to, you know, get that off their record and pay that off with, you know, canned goods, and that we're going to be able to donate to families that are actually in need of them. So thank you. And I move for adoption.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel McCarthy's motion for adoption, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order for the Urban Center Housing Tax Increment Financing Program. Here we're going to have to call the UCH TIF.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee at Whole to hold a public hearing.
Counsel McCarthy moves that this be referred to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole to hold a public hearing, under discussion.
Thank you, President Marcello. I will be reaching out to the members of the Finance Committee shortly to come up with a date that can work for this. We need to be able to, Amanda Chincola through the Planning Department needs to verify, we need to verify the date that works for us in order for her to be able to post this meeting. It needs to be posted for two weeks prior. It's part of the creation of this district boundaries in order for the application for this UCH TIF to go through. I know there was some discussion before the meeting in public comment relative to this. I will not engage in those, try to engage in all those comments right now. I'll let those play out during the meeting. I will just say that, I'm just going to leave it at that. I don't want to, I mean, there has been some stuff on social media. There was some stuff said here tonight, and I want to say that everyone needs to ask the questions and believe the answers, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel McCarthy's motion that this be referred to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole to hold a public hearing, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries. Further communications from the mayor. Oh, where are we here? Trying to figure out where they're, go ahead. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order for a TIF for 1 and 2 Lee Fort Terrace.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole to hold a public hearing on the same date as the previous item.
Counsel McCarthy moves that this be referred to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole to hold a public hearing, under discussion.
Thank you, President Marcello. This is the, this is the, the first one creates the boundary areas and identifies the boundaries and what's in the boundaries. The second, the second one is the payback over the length of the term, of which I've had already numerous questions, but I suggest everyone takes a good hard look at it and be ready with questions come the meeting, which will be sometime after the two-week notification period. So we'll have to work backwards and figure out a date for that. But I move for that the matter be referred.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Counsel President. Excuse me. I will engage with some of the comments that were made here earlier this evening. Just nearing, just arriving at the end of my first term serving in this body, and the Lee Fort Terrace project has easily been the longest-running project that has been going on since I have taken this seat. I have watched a number of public meetings that occurred in a number of forums, whether it was the zoning board, which I think held this matter for the order of maybe six or seven months, and met on it probably in the number of double digits. We have heard directly in this room from Beacon, we discussed the conveyance of land. We are now discussing the creation of this TIF area. It will further be going to the Conservation Commission. There have been a number of public meetings, and I take serious exception to the idea that there has not been a publicly available process where people had an opportunity to observe what is going on with this project. It's true that there have been changes over time, and it can be daunting for the public to follow those changes, especially when it goes on for quite a long time, and I understand that, and I do sympathize with that. But the idea that something clandestine is happening, the idea that due diligence is not being afforded to this project, that nobody is paying attention or being deliberate about what is happening, is just completely false, and I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion to refer this to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole to hold a public hearing, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries. Mayor's informational page, none. Motions, orders, and resolutions? Counsel Ricardi.
City of Salem in City Council, November 17th, 2022, ordered that the Community and Economic Development Committee meet to hold a Haunted Happenings 2022 debriefing conversation with the goal of hearing data on visitors, revenues, and expenses, as well as collecting feedback from organizers, programmers, and operational personnel of the 2022 Halloween season. The meeting shall be held at the Mayor Gene Levesque Community Center at 401 Bridge Street to allow for a roundtable discussion with community planning partners and city staff, including inviting representatives from Destination Salem, Salem Chamber of Commerce, Salem Main Streets, and the Creative Collective. The Mayor, Chief of Police, DPS, Park and Rec, Finance, and Legal Departments are encouraged to send a representative to attend with information on the city's performance for the Halloween season. I move that this be adopted.
Counsel Ricardi moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you, Counsel President. I took notes on this one, because this was probably the longest order ever written, so I apologize for the length of it. There's a lot in this order, because we just, Halloween is a lot, and can you believe it? It was 17 days away. It already feels like it was a lifetime ago. But I wanted to have a conversation. I feel like oftentimes, we're living in the moment with Halloween. We're receiving feedback left and right about what's going on and ideas, and then it's over, and we wait six or seven more months until it comes back. So I wanted to have a conversation that there was a lot of runway in front of us to have that conversation. We weren't in the thick of it and in the weeds. So I thought perhaps like a debriefing, a postmortem, a post-project review, a retrospective, for those that work in the agile world, would be something that was helpful. I'm helping, I'm hoping that this is a helpful meeting, that we can all gain some valuable knowledge and maybe have some actionable items from it. I know that there are other tools that are in the process for collecting information on the season, including the resident survey that was out. I know that there are other task forces that include, like the businesses downtown, business owners, residents, things like that. But I wanted to kind of start somewhere with a public forum and keep it somewhat contained as to what the conversation will be. And the purpose is to really kind of report on areas that we're successful with managing, the number of visitors that we might want to continue, and areas that might need some improvement. The month of October affects everyone within the city. There are lots of topics, and it can really kind of become an octopus with lots of tentacles as we have that conversation. So that's why I was kind of specific with the feedback that we could perhaps tackle during this first meeting. I know that there are lots of other topics that we also want to tackle, like traffic and parking and other items, but I feel when it comes to perhaps this first roundtable items, such as what were our net revenues and expenses that the city received related to tourism, what were some items that the council could action on, such as our ordinances? So what can we regulate in regards to licenses, and what can we not regulate? How can sound and noise be better managed? Street closures, items like that. So that was just kind of some ideas that I had to help kick off the discussion. Again, it is a very large discussion, so I'm hoping, I'm definitely offering up my assistance to help organize this meeting. And I do also want to say that a lot of the information that I'm looking for, that I think all of us are looking for in regards to the revenue and expenses, won't be available until the end of this quarter. The state doesn't provide their taxes, like hotel tax, meals tax, things like that, until the quarter is closed out. So I just wanted to, I'm not expecting to meet on this right away, but I wanted to have, again, have it in here so the start of the year, we can kind of jumpstart on it, again, with a lot of runway when we're not in the thick of the season, as we say.
Thank you. Counsel Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I welcome that great idea. I want to thank the good Counsel, Ward six, Ricardi, for bringing this to the attention. I think this is a very well-thought idea that we need to have a conversation. However, my only concern is why we had to do this meeting at the General, at the community center when we have a chamber here. We've been having before some type of meetings, kind of similar to this, and we bring everybody here. I remember we had once the City Planner Department, all of the members, and some of the members of the community, and everyone here in the chamber. Any reason why the site had to be over there? I know that we expected maybe quite a big numbers of people to come in. But that's why I think we had the technology in place. I think that we can have a hybrid kind of type of meeting, where we can have people here in place and others on internet, so everybody can participate and everybody can see it, because I think that that's very, very nice and very appropriate to have, where the public express themselves, especially after this Halloween, in which I think the city, visitors, I mean, the people that visited the city of Salem was a record number. So it's good to hear from everyone, and it's good to put everything in this perspective in every aspect. So I want to work on you. I just wanted to ask you if there is any possibility to have this in the chamber? Is there any possibility? Thank you.
Counsel Ricardi.
Sure. Thank you, Counsel President. Great question. So the reason that I was requesting to have this held outside of our council chamber, one, definitely because of the audience size. I feel like our chambers are tiny, and this is a lot of people on the invite list, and I also feel it would be a large public participation, perhaps. There's lots of parking, it's easily accessible. So really just space and logistical. I thought the community life center would be great. And also, I wanted it to be more of a roundtable conversation, as opposed to one person coming up and speaking at the podium, then another person coming up. I wanted to have it more of a conversation-type discussion. And the third item, like we see with the Park and Rec meetings, they have been hybrid from the annex for a while now. So I think they actually do their hybrid meetings really well, so we can have the Zoom meeting from there just as well. So it's definitely, it's space, logistic, a lot of people, and to really foster that conversation, discussion-type aspect.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Marcello. I also want to express my support for the community life center location. For nothing else, the parking, you know, that's a really strong point. It can be so challenging, you know, to get here and chambers. And also, I've attended, you know, large community meetings there. We had one a couple of years ago for housing, and I think it was really conducive to conversations and engagement. And yeah, I look forward to this happening. Thank you.
Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Counsel President. In support of the idea, in support of the location, I simply wanted to raise the suggestion that we might want to invite the Board of Health to this conversation as well. If the Ward six council will accept a friendly amendment, I think I would like to keep sight of the idea that not only do we have the usual kind of issues you would expect with a large gathering that may lead to some health impacts, but also we're still living in the time of COVID, and I'd really like to have some insight into if and what impact there might be from gathering that large number of people into our city and kind of what it does to those trends.
Just for clarity, do you want the Board of Health or the Health Agent?
The Health Agent.
Okay. Counsel Ricardi.
I think that's a great idea. I would love to accept that amendment, and I would like to say the Health Agent or a representative from that department. I knew, I'm sure I've forgotten more, so it also, that's why I would like to keep it as this conversation.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I would also further add a recommendation, and we invite the Fire Chief or his designee as well. I had numerous conversations with the Fire Chief during the month of October relative to what they were doing, but he also, he coordinates with the EMS people as well. So I think they'd be valuable, valuable to the conversation. And I look forward to, the meeting is trying to figure out how we're going to do this and how we would organize it. And I guess, I guess my only other question would be, it's the Committee, the Committee on Community and Economic Development. It's not co-posted, nor is it the Committee of the Whole, so is the intent to limit the involvement of the council because we're changing venues and doing all of that, or is it because just we want to just keep, to try to keep it just to that specific committee? Thank you.
Counsel Ricardi.
Thank you, Counsel President. So yes, I thank you for adding the submission of the Fire Chief or Representative. Great idea. I'm sure there are others. I think that was also a slight. I have no problem with amending it to Committee of the Whole. If that's the will, that's fine with me.
So Committee of the Whole, okay. I have one further, if someone agrees and would like to make this amendment. Just as a backup, can we add that the meeting could be held in City Council chambers just in case? Because the way this is written, if it can't be held at the CLC for whatever reason, we're stuck. So can we just add the City Council chambers as a backup?
So moved. Just, I mean, if I, thank you. Thank you, President Marcello. Just if, logistically, it wouldn't, the venue wouldn't work out, I would hate to go through all the work of trying to plan this and then come up with the fact that we couldn't do it at the CLC for whatever reason, and then have to bring the order back in relative to then moving it to the council chambers. So that way, we just kind of cover ourselves. I mean, obviously, I think that the first choice of the community life center is the proper choice, but for whatever reason that can't happen, then just to have it as a backup, I think that makes sense.
It's just to keep it so we don't get stuck. But yes, the CLC is the preferred. Counsel Watsonfeld.
Could the wording be, apologies, could the wording be changed to any adequate city property to serve the purpose, rather than locking ourselves into chamber? I just want to go on record as saying I wholeheartedly agree with the spirit of this meeting, as Counsel Ricardi has outlined it, and I do believe that a more spacious, round- And I do believe that a more spacious, roundtable discussion would be the most productive, given all of the incredibly important parties we're asking to come to the table. And also, by the time this meeting does take place, if it is in the new year, not only will we have the financial information, as Council Riccardi pointed out, but it will also follow a number of other postmortem efforts having to do with haunted happenings. And we will have a lot more data, and we'll have a lot of people that'll have prepared remarks. There will already have been some changes made in preparation for next year that we'll be able to further talk more about. I do think this is going to bring in a lot of, a lot of community engagement, and I do think we need an adequate space. And I would, I hear your point about not wanting us to lock in, but I also don't want to limit us, you know, I don't want to end up here because there's no other place.
Agreed. This is not a big enough room.
Yeah. So maybe even a little town hall, right? Like any city property that serves the adequate purpose.
As long as, as long as we can do a hybrid meeting from there, I guess, is fine, or not. High school?
Yep.
So any other municipal property? As a backup. CLC is the, wherever it's appropriate. Appropriate. Council Riccardi. Okay. Okay. Well, while you-
Madam President, can I move for a one-minute recess while the city clerk verifies some amendments?
All those in favor. We will take a one-minute recess while we look this up. Back to Council Riccardi's motion. Council McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I would just ask one question of the city clerk. Do we have, if we vote to take a change of venue to hold the meeting, do we have to have a date specific at this time? No? Okay. Thank you.
Council Presnisky.
Thank you, Chair. Madam President, I think we're missing the vote on one very important aspect of inviting the MBTA, a representative from the MBTA, to also be able to come and join the discussion. We count on them to provide public transportation, and we scream all year long for people to come, come using public transportation. And I think they're, that we should invite them and get some of their input, and they should get some of our input. So I'm just adding an amendment to, extend an invitation to someone, representative from the MBTA.
Thank you. Excellent addition. Anyone else? Okay. So, if we can recap, we've got additions of the Health Agent or a Representative, the Fire Chief or Designee, and a Representative from the MBTA. Do we also want to just leave it open as to, and any other members at this point? No, just leave it to those three. Okay. We're gonna, so there's a motion to add those three. We'll take that first. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries, those three are added. Now, where did we land on the meeting place? Do we want to add a backup of the, no, we're just going to keep it as the CLC. Correct? Okay. So, on Council Riccardi's motion for adoption of this, of this order, all those, no, Council Cohen.
Don't we have to amend it to Committee of the Whole?
Oh, and, thank you. We're also going to amend this to, that it is a meeting of the Committee of the Whole. All those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries? Okay. Any other amendments? This is going to be a biggie. Council Riccardi.
Just for my clarification, did we amend that to Committee, the Community and Economic Development Committee? Co-posted with Committee of the Whole? Or is that now in the Committee of the Whole Committee?
Co-posted.
It was co-posted. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for asking for that clarification. Okay. Anything else? On Council Riccardi's motion, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries? This is going to be a big meeting, Council Riccardi. Okay. Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Council Riccardi.
City of Salem and City Council, November 17th, 2022. In the year 2022, an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to traffic, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem is followed. Section 1, Chapter 42, Section 50B. Handicap Zone Limited Time is hereby amended by repealing the following. Repeal in front of number 27 Barstow Street for a distance of 20 feet, handicap parking limited time toe zone. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move for adoption for first passage.
Council Riccardi moves for adoption for first passage. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries? Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Council Watsonville.
Thank you, Council President. In the City of Salem, the year 2022, an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to traffic, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem is followed. Section 1, Chapter 42, Section 50B. Handicap Zone Limited Time is hereby amended by adding the following. In front of number 15 Conant Street for a distance of 20 feet, handicap parking limited time toe zone. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move that this be adopted for first passage.
Council Watsonville moves for adoption for first passage. Is there any discussion? Seeing none on the motion for adoption for first passage, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries? Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Council Cohen.
City of Salem, in the year 2022, an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to traffic, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem is followed. Section 1, Chapter 42, Section 50B. Handicap Zone Limited Time is hereby amended by adding the following. In front of number 3 Ocean Ave for a distance of 20 feet, handicap parking limited time toe zone. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. I move this as adopted for first passage.
Council Cohen moves for adoption for first passage. Is there any discussion? Seeing none on the motion for adoption, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries? Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Council McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. The City of Salem, the year 2022, an ordinance to amend, an ordinance relative to traffic, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem is followed. Section 1, Chapter 42, Section 50B. Handicap Zone Limited Time is hereby amended by adding the following. In front of number 42 S.C. for a distance of 20 feet, handicap parking limited time toe zone. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move for adoption for first passage.
Council McCarthy moves for adoption for first passage. Any discussion?
Thank you, President Marcello. This request came into Lieutenant Tucker and Police Traffic. He went out and checked it out. The only interesting thing about this one is the resident actually lives across the street, but there's no parking on that side of the street. So this is a slightly odd one where it's actually going to go across the street, but because the only way to effectively allow for the parking in front of the person's house would have been to eliminate numerous parking spaces on the other side of the street to accommodate a different traffic flow. Because of the way, because there's no parking on that side of the street, it would have to be, if you put a parking space, then the road would have, had to have shifted to allow for it. I think this is a good compromise. I'll have to reach out to make sure that everyone understands. But right now, because we want to get this through, I move for first passage, and I'll have a conversation with the people who live at number 42.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none on Council McCarthy's motion for adoption for first passage, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries? Committee reports. Council McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. City of Salem, City Council, November 17th, 2022. The Community Administration of Finance co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met to whom was referred the matter of resolution for improvements to Palmer Cove Park, has considered said matter and recommend adoption.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion?
Thank you, President Marcello. We met earlier this evening. We had Anna Freeman, the Finance Director, as well as Tom Devine from the Planning Department. As everyone may recall, there were two resolutions in front of us relative to park grants. And myself and others raised questions about the wording of the resolution. And the recommendation was in section 2 of the resolution where it reads, hereby appropriates, the motion was to reward that, to allocate. Therefore, the presumption that we, with the resolution, we were appropriating funds, isn't the, isn't the intent, the intent is just to make sure that the people at the state realize that our intention is to allocate the proper funds in order to match the grant. Additional questions that came up during the meeting, relative, went to Tom Devine, was asked about the funding and as Mr. Devine attested to during that meeting, a lot of the funding sources have already been put in place relative when we were adopting our action plan with regards to our five-year action plan. It also, there were some gaps in the funding that the, later this year, early next year, the CPC Committee will be putting an appropriation in front of us to fill the gap, potentially with regards to one of the, I believe, I believe it is the Palmer Cove project. No, actually, it's the next project, the Willows Project, that needed, I believe it was a $90,000 gap funding, the Good Ward. Four councilors asked those questions relative to where the money was and where it was going to be, where it was allocated out. And Mr. Devine testified that the money is in place except for this $90,000 that will be coming in front of us shortly, once the CPC puts their proposals together for us. So the motion out of committee was to adopt the resolution as amended.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? On amending this to change the word appropriated to allocated? All those in favor? Do we have to do a roll call for the amendment? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? So amended. On adoption of the recommendation, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
If I, if I may, President Marcello, that would be, that would be to adopt the resolution at this point, correct?
Adopt the resolution as amended.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Cohen?
Yes.
Council Dominguez?
Yes.
Council Haprock?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council McLean?
Yes.
Council Merkel?
Yes.
Council Proznyuski?
Yes.
Council Riccardi?
Yes.
Council Varela?
Yes.
Council Watsonville?
Yes.
And Council Marcello?
Yes.
On the resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the LWCF program, Phase 2 improvements at Palmer Cove Park, as amended, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the matter carries. Further committee reports. Council McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. The City of Salem and the City Council, November 17th, 2022. The Community Administration of Finance co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of the resolutions for improvements to the Salem Willows Park, has considered said matter and recommend adoption.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries? On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion?
Thank you, President Marcello. Much like the last one, the motion in committee was to amend the resolution to change the word from hereby appropriates to allocates in section 2. And then my recommendation would be upon, if everyone approves that recommendation, then we roll call vote on the resolution.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none on amending the, the resolution to change the word appropriate to allocate? All those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries? On adoption of the resolution as amended, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Cohen?
Yes.
Council Dominguez?
Yes.
Council Haprock?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council McLean?
Yes.
Council Merkel?
Yes.
Council Proznyuski?
Yes.
Council Riccardi?
Yes.
Council Varela?
Yes.
Council Watsonville?
Yes.
And Council Marcello?
Yes.
On the resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the park program for Phase 2 improvements to Salem Willows, as amended, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in the affirmative and none in the negative, the matter carries. Further committee reports, Council Riccardi.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, to who was referred the matter of granting certain licenses, secondhand valuables, Game Zone, has considered said matter and would recommend that licenses be granted.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion?
Thank you, Council President. Game Zone has been a business here in the city for a while and looking forward to them continuing.
Thank you. On any other discussion? Seeing none? On adoption of the license? All those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries? Council McCarthy. City of Salem. City of Salem and City Council, November 17th, 2022. The Committee of the Whole was referred the matter of reviewing city council rules and orders, has considered said matter, and would recommend that the matter remain in committee. Is that the right one? Wrong one. The Committee of the Whole was referred to the matter of tenant protection ordinance regarding condo conversion, has considered said matter and would recommend that the matter remain in committee.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion, Council Marcello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a really good discussion. Thank you to Amanda Chancola for laying out what has been discussed within the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. There were a lot of really good questions that she has noted and is bringing back to the board for further discussion and clarification. And so this is going to remain in committee until we have, we can bring her back to clarify some more about this ordinance.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none on the adopt the recommendation, the matter remaining in committee, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries? Further committee reports, Council Marcello.
City of Salem and City Council, November 17th, 2022. The Committee of the Whole was referred the matter of reviewing city council rules and orders, has considered said matter and would recommend that the matter remain in committee.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion, Council Marcello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was another really great discussion, but with a short timeframe. We got through, I think, the first 16 rules. We are going to get through the rest of them in the next meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, December 1st. And at that time, I also intend to bring some of the, some options for wording that we could use to amend what we already discussed, that we'll have gone through the city clerk and the city solicitor, just to make sure. I'm trying to finish this up before the December 8th meeting so that we can take a first vote on that then. So we'll be in touch about meeting times to get this through. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on adoption of the recommendation, this matter remaining in committee, all those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries?
We have the following order that was submitted by the city solicitor, and in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, the city council hereby declares that Thomas Doyle has met the requirements for exemption set forth in this section and may be retained as a basketball league director seasonal for the park wreck and community service department, not to exceed $500 in this calendar year.
Council Proznyuski.
Yeah, I request that this order be adopted.
Council Proznyuski moves for adoption, under discussion?
Yes. As we all know, and I think everybody in the city knows, that Mr. Thomas Doyle is the Salem High School basketball coach, and has done an extraordinary job in that position for many years. I cannot think of anybody more suited to take this position, and I'm glad that he applied. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on Council Proznyuski's motion for adoption, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries? Petitions?
We have petition from Lucy Bragg to discuss street sweeping signs.
Council Watsonville.
Thank you, Council President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Government Services, which is an edit from what is in our agenda.
Thank you. Council Watsonville moves that this be referred to the Committee on Government Services, under discussion.
Thank you, Council President.
The Government Services Subcommittee has been discussing even just earlier, last night, I guess it was, about how trash is handled and street sweeping is handled in the city. So I figured this will be a nice, that you'll hear later in the agenda, it stayed in committee. So this is, will fit nicely into future conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counsel Watsonfeld's motion that this be referred to the Committee on Government Services, all those in favor. All those opposed, the matter carries. Further petitions.
We have requests from the residents of Lee Street to hold a block party on December 3rd, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., with a rain date of December 4th.
Counsel O'Cardy.
Thank you, Counsel President, and move that this be granted.
Counsel O'Cardy moves that this be granted, under discussion.
Thank you, Counsel President. We're looking for a holiday caroling session on December 3rd with a rain or wind date of December 5th.
Wind date, too?
Yeah. If it's very windy, it will be rescheduled.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counsel O'Cardy's motion that this be granted. All those in favor. All those opposed, the matter carries. Further petitions.
We have a secondhand valuable application from Echo ATM for kiosks located 11 Trader's Way and 450 Highland Ave.
Counsel O'Cardy.
Thank you, Counsel President, and move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counsel O'Cardy moves that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. All those opposed, the matter carries. Further petitions.
We have seven claims.
Counsel O'Cardy.
Thank you, Counsel President, and move that these be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counsel O'Cardy moves that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor. All those opposed, the matter carries. Unfinished business.
We have a second passage of an ordinance relative to disposition of city-owned land.
Counsel O'Cardy.
Thank you, Counsel President. I move for adoption for second passage. I just want to note that there were no amendments made it. It's just adoption for second passage.
Counsel O'Cardy moves for adoption for second passage. Any final discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, do we need a roll call? No. All those in favor. All those opposed, the matter carries. Anything else? Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Mercillo. Before I move for adjournment, I would also, I would like to extend everyone a greeting of happy Thanksgiving. It's going to be, it's a busy week travel-wise as family and friends return home to celebrate with us. I wish them all safe travels. I wish everybody in the City of Salem a happy holiday season, full of cheer and goodwill. And looking forward to coming back in early December to tackle some of the remaining issues. As we get into our holiday season, I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't once again say how proud and happy I am to be sitting on the City Council with all the work that all of you have done over this year. It's been amazing. And as I've been quoted as saying many times, your families come first and take this time during this holiday season to make your families first and foremost. We still have a lot of work to finish before the year end. But once again, thank you and thank to everyone else and the public for their support. And I wish once again everyone a happy Thanksgiving season. And after saying that, I move for adjournment.
Counsel McCarthy moves that we adjourn. All those in favor. All those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.